Twenty people.
Okay, everyone, I'm calling this meeting to order. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting was sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on August 28, 2020, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpboro.com and on the bulletin board of the Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on August 28, 2020, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. As Mayor, I preside over the council meeting and may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or participation in the virtual meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comment or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Tara, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag. Forgot my flag duty.
Thank you, Tara and Elsie. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Burrell Mittler?
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Here.
Councilman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilman George?
Here.
Councilman Hale?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yeah.
Borough Attorney?
Yeah.
Borough Administrator?
Okay. This is our 10th virtual council meeting. A recording of the proceedings will be made available via HPTV after the meeting. So I have the great honor of presenting to you and to one of our young residents, a proclamation in honor of his service to our community. Noam Goldwasser, I hope you're in the audience someplace. I'm going to read you. I'm sorry?
I see Marcia Goldwasser. Perhaps we can let... She's here, so we're assuming Noam's there.
Okay. So I'm going to read, Noam, the proclamation that will go on to the record about you, and after which I'm going to ask Councilman Hale to say a few words. Whereas Noam Goldwasser, a member of the Highland Park Boy Scout Troop 55, received the rank of Eagle Scout on July 21, 2020, and whereas Noam has been actively involved in scouting for 12 years, joining PAC 5 in 2008 and Troop 55 in 2013, and whereas Noam has earned over 30 merit badges, including ones in environmental science, emergency preparedness, first aid, disabilities awareness, space exploration, nuclear science, and radio, he also became a licensed ham radio operator at Boy Scout Camp. Whereas Noam has served the troop as both patrol leader and senior patrol leader, and whereas Noam's Eagle Scout project was to take inventory of and update the online catalog for the library at the Highland Park Conservative Temple Congregation Anche Emeth, he organized his friends, family, and fellow Boy Scouts to inspect every book in the library, update its online catalog entry, and reorganize the books. His Eagle Scout project took over 100 hours of community service to accomplish. Whereas Noam is a graduate of Golda Ak Academy and is currently a freshman at Rutgers University, he hopes to someday work in the fields of math or computer science. Now, therefore, I, Galbraill Mittler, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby proclaim Noam Goldwasser a distinguished Highland Park resident. Councilman Hale, I know you had a few words to say.
I just wanted to add my congratulations both to Noam. I was Noam's Cub Scout leader when he... before he became a Boy Scout, and this is the first Cub Scout that was in my pack that has become an Eagle Scout, so I'm very, very proud of that. And Noam is a quiet guy, but he works very hard. He's a very kind guy, and he was a senior patrol leader for my son Zach for a while. You know, he doesn't say a lot, but he's actually very, very nice and very kind and deserves this recognition and honor as his parents do. Marcia and Phil have been right there with him the entire time, sometimes with a smile, sometimes with a pull, but overall, it's been a great family effort. And so I just wanted to add my congratulations to Noam and the Goldwasser family. This is a great accomplishment, so congratulations.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you, Noam, for everything you're doing for the community. All right, we're going to move into council reports at this point, and I'm going to go in order of how you all appear on my screen. So Councilwoman Tara Canavera, do you have a report tonight?
Just like to say that the library is getting some new audiobooks, so I hope that everybody will enjoy those, and that's it.
Okay. Councilwoman Foster Dublin, do you have a report?
Very, very brief. First, I just want to report on the woman that was attacked here in town, that it still continues to be investigated by our police department and also by the prosecutor's office. It's an active investigation. I want to let everyone know that it's actively being investigated by both the prosecutor's office and our HBPD. We cannot make any comments because it's an active case, and we want to see a resolution to this matter as soon as it's humanly possible, and that's all I can say right now. It's thoroughly being investigated. So we're all concerned about this and happy to know that it's taken seriously with our PD and the prosecutor's office. On another note, Governor Murphy signed the 911 bill, and this is something that I've always talked about, about people making phone calls to the police department because they see someone that they believe don't belong in their neighborhood, don't look like they belong, don't look like them, or they feel that this person is somehow imposing or intruding in their space or in particular their neighborhood. And they tend to make these, what I would call nuisance calls, to the police department. Whenever a phone call is made, the police department has to act, so they gather a bunch of questions, but they still have to go out to look, and it puts the police officer in an uncomfortable situation, and more so, the person who's being called upon to say, "What are you doing here?" and all these awkward questions. It just puts everybody in a bad space. So there is a bill that would hold people accountable for calling, making nuisance calls to 911 or racist calls to 911. So this is a... It's called... The legislature is called the Criminalizing of a Forced 911 Call Based on Race or Protected Class. So that was done on Monday, and I can't wait for us to get a copy on our website and put it out there. So kudos for Governor Murphy and the team that fought long and hard to put this all together. Another one that was signed by Governor Murphy today, and that one is the Driver's License for All Residents of New Jersey. So if you're a resident of New Jersey, documented or not, you are now entitled to have a driver's license. And that, I know, is something that Highland Park has always been a strong advocate for. And this is one of those things that will make driving, the privilege of driving, fairer to all. I believe it will cut down on accidents and what have you, and it would give people a better quality of life because they can get to jobs, and they will have cars, they'll have insurance, and I think it's a wonderful bill all around each and every one of us. With that said, that's pretty much my report. There's two things tonight, two ordinances that we're going to be voting on. One is going to be on the fire department, and that's the upgrade of the ordinance, and the other is going to be about the deer feeding. And this one is only on the deer feeding and on the fire department, and that's my report. I'll have other comments later.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. For border health has been, you know, receiving a lot of emails and about, you know, different scenarios that residents in town have seen throughout the town or Main Street or residents, you know, sometimes forgetting to social distance. So please make sure that whenever humanly possible, please try to social distance. And I know, you know, summer is winding down, and, you know, we may start staying in the house now, but I know we're coming up to a long, you know, traditional summer weekend. I just want to let everyone know, just because you see those, you know, cheap flights and everything, it's really not worth the risk right now. I know it's so tempting, I know, I just know. And with, you know, every other day, we're seeing on like NJ.com, another bar shut down, you know, a Rutgers party that we're seeing in another headline. Just please, please, please try to not attend those basically illegal parties, young people especially. And just please, please try to keep yourself safe, your mask, and social distance. COVID is not over despite what everyone else thinks. Also, with the food pantry, to all the residents that have donated ever since the beginning of the pandemic, they have started... They purchased Amazon gift cards to buy in bulk because now they have to pre-bag the food and make sure all the clients are receiving the same products. And they're still not accepting food donations as of now, but they are still accepting Amazon gift cards and the items that's on their Amazon wishlist. It's been, like, hard for them to find the quantity of items in stores such as, you know, Stop &amp; Shop and the local, you know, Targets and Walmarts. And Amazon has been able to deliver the items to them as well. For Thanksgiving, at their last meeting, normally they do a distribution of turkeys, but this year, they decided to... It's a major operation for the distribution of the turkeys, and we know that it means a lot to the residents, and it's a lot of people in a small place at once, and we didn't want to put the volunteers at risk. So they voted to give their clients vouchers to Stop &amp; Shop instead so they can do their own shopping to enjoy the holiday. And the voucher will work the same as it works for the farmer's market. They also purchased three canopies during the distribution on the weekends and stuff because as they're getting into the winter and fall months, they will still be doing the distributions and without... Basically, it's a lot of volunteers, so we're not sure how the percentage of capacity may go, so they're planning to still do everything outside. I did want to comment on the Equity Commission and on the agenda tonight. I saw that members of the community will be appointed to the Mayor's Equity Advisory Council, and I also wanted to note that I'm happy to see that these are... There's names on here, residents that have applied originally for Equity Commission. These are also some residents that I interviewed and recommended to the mayor as well. So, and I know this is a diverse voice just in general here. Everyone is not gonna walk at the same beat. And I don't think, as some residents were saying as well, that there won't be transparency, and I'm sure the mayor will touch on that as well. So, but I'm just happy to see that the committee is being fully filled and with applicants that I had recommended. Also, let me go back. And September is intergenerational month, and Grandparents' Day is on September 13. It's no better time to show your grandparents how to make a video call or even set up a Netflix account, especially because we're quarantined. So happy intergenerational month, and that's my report.
Thank you, Stephanie. Councilman Fine, do you have a report tonight?
Yes, I do, Mayor, just one item tonight. I wanted to mention that Pandora Scooter today stepped down as Chair of the Arts Commission due to her getting a new job. We wish her much success in her new job. My understanding is that John Marin, who is the current Vice President of the Arts Commission, will be taking over as Chair. I just wanted to express thanks to Pandora Scooter for her four years serving as Chair of the Arts Commission and for all the projects and programs she brought to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. She did a fine job, especially with spoken word programs. Okay, Councilman Hale, do you have a report?
I do, Mayor, thank you very much. As many people know, the governor has okayed a plan for in-restaurant dining that will start up this Friday. I did want to point out that, while this is a welcome sign, while we're excited about it, while it's great that there'll be an opportunity to go and eat in our restaurants, I did want to point out that there will still be some restrictions that will be placed on indoor dining. There's restrictions in terms of the number of people, the percentage of the space that can be used. The number of people in a party is limited to eight. The requirements are that people eat and drink while they are seated, not while they are up and standing. Face masks are going to be required inside the premises, except while you're eating and drinking. There will be masks for everyone who is involved. I just... This is a tough... This is an important step. This is a good step, and as Stephanie raised, you know, we're all sort of in this together, trying to figure out how to make the best of it. But it is incumbent upon all of us, as we jump out of the opportunity to go to restaurants and go into restaurants, that we do our best to try and abide by the rules. We're working on some signage, we're working on with the restaurant owners in this capacity, but if we could all work together to make sure that we're doing this as safely as possible, we'll get to do more of it. So I just want to put an encouragement that as this happens, please do everything you can to follow the guidelines and the rules of indoor dining, and it starts on this Friday, I believe, so. I also wanted to welcome two new businesses to Highland Park that I think are worth noting. There is a business on the corner of Fourth and Rarican, the old Pinot's Bike Shop that has been empty for quite some time, will be taken by Jersey Home Furnishings. So for your home furnishing needs, I guess. But it's nice to have such a prominent part of our downtown filled, so I certainly hope that will support Jersey Home Furnishing. And then also Papagallo's, used to be where Aposto used to be, is now owned Papagallo's. I have heard rave reviews as well. So I just wanted to... There are new businesses. We need to continue to support our existing businesses, but I wanted to put out a shout-out to those. I also wanted to mention and thank you to Olivia Parker. Olivia was a summer intern for the mayor, and she did a report on... I don't know if you can see this, but I don't know if that comes out, but it's COVID-19 and its impact on local businesses. For someone who's a high school student, this was quite an effort. She went out and she knocked on doors through our businesses and asked how things were going and what Main Street could do and what the Borough could do. It's been a... It's a wonderful report, and it's great to have Olivia, you know, work hard over it. And she did a fantastic job, and I know I grade these things for a living, so I would definitely give her a good grade on this. So I wanted to say thanks for that. I wanted to also echo Stephanie's comments real quickly on the Equity Commission. I'm very excited. Some of the people that I recommended to be on this commission are going to be appointed tonight way back. So I think that it's very nice that we'll be finally moving forward ahead on that. So I'm very excited in that aspect. So that's, I think, a good thing. And then lastly, normally, this is a time where we all say, "Have a great time at school." It doesn't quite ring the same this time. Have a great time in front of your computer at school, but if that's how you're going, if you're going back face-to-face in some capacity, also, you know, this is the start of the school year for many students, including our public school kids, so I just wanted to wish everybody a good luck to the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Council President Phil, George, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Just briefly, I want to address the fact that it looks like all of Highland Park is being reconstructed in the streets. And I know that it's been a great inconvenience for a lot of people. Remember, the old signs used to go up that said, "Temporary inconvenience, permanent improvement." I met with the Superintendent of our DPW today to discuss our road projects as well as PSE and G status. We have actually begun the projects that we fund normally every year. This year, it is South Park, Cherry Street, and South Adelaide. As you know, we extended South Adelaide to complete that. They are currently our contractors. We're in the process of doing some underground repairs to sewers because if we're going to pave over them, we need to inspect them. We have on the resolution the camera inspections for the independent company to run the cameras through. We will be doing the underground work, followed by trees grooming or removing as necessary. Then the curbs will be in place, and then the paving will take place. It is anticipated it will be relatively swift in these projects, but we do need to be patient. Those are our projects, which are ongoing, which the Borough funds. In addition, anybody who tried to get them, take the shortcut through the north side off River Road, knows that South... North Second was closed at Dennison, and the Dennison was closed at Fourth, North Fourth. PSE and G is trying to wrap up their project, so they are working on multiple sites at the present time. However, in meeting with the Superintendent of DPW, we will be scheduling a meeting within the next two weeks, as I understand, with administration and with PSE and G and the police to discuss the completion of their project and also to start the discussion about repair to the roads. Those roads will remain a bit under construction until the project is done and we approve and discuss with PSE and G their replacement projects. So that's all I wanted to report on, Mayor, is to let people know that all the projects are ongoing, that it does take a while to get them done. And in addition, this is the season when the Borough normally does its project before its road improvements, which have been in the works for some time and awaiting the state grants. So they're also running at the same time. So it does look a little bit like somebody's decided to suddenly dig up half of Highland Park, but that's progress, we'll get it done, and very shortly, it'll return to normal. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to add to that that the Borough Administrator and I had a conference call with the head leadership of this project at PSE and G to express our concerns about the lack of or poor communication regarding the street closings and what was going to be required. They acknowledged the shortcoming on their end. There was a change in personnel running the job, and that was part of the problem. They are very aware of the importance of communication moving forward, and the good thing coming out of this is those 100-year-old, 100-plus-year-old gas lines that are in our streets will now be up to date, safe, and last maybe another 100 years. Okay, let's see. The Borough Administrator is not here. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
A no report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I have a report for you tonight. I do want to tell everyone that the COVID-19 testing that we were able to bring to Highland Park for one day last week went very smoothly. There were somewhere between 40 and 50 residents that were tested. And I know I got my results... The test was on Wednesday, I had my results on Friday, and so the results came in very quickly. Related to this is I want to congratulate all of us in Highland Park for getting the number of cases per week down to a reasonable number last week. You may recall that two weeks ago, we had six new confirmed tests in Highland Park, which was an incredibly large weekly number for us at this point in the coronavirus pandemic, and I was extremely concerned that we were heading in the wrong direction. And I'm happy to report that last week, we were back to two new cases in Highland Park. We were pretty evenly split between men and women, and the average age of all our cases still ranges about 50 years old. So please, I just want to echo what several of our council members said. We are far from out of this thing. We're doing better, but there is still a lot of concern. So as our restaurants open, as Councilman Hale said, please obey the regulations that the Governor's executive order has outlined. As you're going around town, you'll see some signs popping up to remind you that when you are walking on our downtown streets, you are required to wear a mask because you have no way of knowing who you're going to run into, how close you're going to be. And we must all work to keep our families and our neighbors safe and healthy. So again, I want to thank everyone for helping to get those numbers down again last week. Several of you... Several of the council members have mentioned the Equity Council that is on the agenda tonight. I wanted to clarify a few things from the meeting I missed last week. I had a family obligation, and I had to attend that. I do want to thank Stephanie for explaining where we were last week and laying the groundwork for what we're going to be voting on tonight. I did have a chance to hear from some of the residents and also from my council members to explain to me what was said, what the concerns were, and I think you will find that the resolution that is being introduced tonight for a vote includes some of those concerns. I want you to understand that though the council is moving under the executive branch, it is not losing any of the ability to make change in Highland Park. In fact... In fact, our hope is that by moving it to the, to me, we'll be able to move quicker on many of the things that we want to see happen here. This group will be able to develop programs that will have a positive impact on the entire municipality. If there are things that we need to introduce as policy changes, then we will be able to take that to the council and have them vote on that, just as if they were still under another council umbrella. So that should ease some of the concerns that I heard about. I'm asking also Councilwoman Elsie Foster-Dublin, who is the liaison to our public safety team here in Highland Park, to join me at these meetings because many of the things we're going to be talking about will relate to the Police Department and other areas of public safety. So she will be able to keep her Public Safety Council Committee up to speed on anything that we're working on. I also asked the Borough Attorney to amend the resolution that you'll be voting on tonight. You'll see voting on tonight to include the fact that this body would be subject to the OPMA regulations, just as any committee is. I never intended it for it not to be, but now it is clearly spelled out in the resolution. And there was some reference made to the composition of this council. I did ask that it move from seven members that were on the original council now to 10 members. And all of those members are hopefully going to be appointed tonight. They're on the agenda. I also asked that the resolution be amended to include the bylaws that were put together by the original Equity Commission so that we have a starting point from which to move as soon as we start meeting, which I hope will happen in September. And that brings you up to speed on everything that we, I've asked to have included in this resolution. Okay. That takes us to our public discussion, number one. And during this public discussion period, there's a total of 21 minutes allotted, three minutes maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items on the agenda. If you wish to speak about an item that is not on the agenda, I ask that you wait until the second public discussion session where you can bring things up that are not already listed on the agenda. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes have, have lapsed. She will give you a warning when there is 30 seconds left. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute time just to make sure that everyone who wants to speak gets a chance to speak. And as a reminder, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three-minute guideline or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Okay. So if you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing the star nine on your phone or select the raise hand button on this application. The administrator's assistant will announce you by turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin when you're called on to, to speak by giving us your first and last name as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak now on a topic that is on the agenda, please press star nine or raise your hand. We have Jessica Hunston. Okay. Jessica, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Great, thank you. My name is Jessica Hunston. I'm at 304 Montgomery Street. I, first of all, I, I wanted to ask a couple of clarifying questions about the Mayor's Equity Council. And I first of all, wanted to start by thanking all of the residents. I know that several residents raised concerns at the last council meeting. And I also appreciate that you, the mayor was responsive to those concerns. And I can see those changes in the resolution. And so I think that that's a really important change. But I did want to follow up on this idea of the Open Public Meeting Act and that this, this advisory council would be subject to that, which I think is really important. But the Equity Commissions, during the Equity Commission meetings, members of the public were able to attend and ask questions or offer suggestions during a designated time, which I think is a really important part of a commission. So I wanted, I assume that this will also be the case under the, the new advisory council in an effort to be transparent and responsive to the public. But I just wanted to confirm that that will be the case.
Yes, absolutely. All of meetings will be noticed.
Okay, great. Not, but it's more than noticed. It's more that-
And they'll be able to attend.
More than attend, contribute.
Yeah, just as we would at any, any committee meeting.
Okay, great. And then the other thing I wanted to ask about was, how will those advisory council meetings be promoted to the public? And where will the agenda and the notes be posted?
So because I wanted to make sure that we would be able to communicate and keep everything public, I've asked my assistant to attend all the meetings so that he can take the minutes for us until the group assigns a secretary who could take the minutes if we choose to do that. So those minutes, just as any other committee minutes, will be readily available. We can set up a separate location on the website to post them there, make them easily accessible. The agendas would also be posted as all the other committee agendas are posted.
Great. And then- And, and then I would just assume that the, they will also be promoted on the website like all the other meetings.
Yes.
Okay, great. And one last, I know I only have a few seconds, but I, I noticed that Governor Phil Murphy signed legislation which would amend the current law to include false incrimination and filing a false police report based as, on, as a form of bias intimidation. I'm sure you're familiar with that bill that was just passed, A1906.
Fine. Sorry. But Jessica, just so you know, Councilwoman Elsie Foster-Dublin spoke about that bill in her opening remarks.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I must have come a few minutes late and didn't hear it. I'll, I'll be sure to listen. Thanks so much.
Okay. All right. Next, we have Elena Gerstman. Please state your name and address. Can you unmute yourself?
I have it now. Sorry about that. I'm Elena Gerstman at 127 North Sixth Avenue in Highland Park. Actually, I'll follow up on what Jessica just mentioned that Councilwoman Foster-Dublin mentioned in terms of the new law by Governor Murphy, which I think we're all supportive. One quick question is how will the dispatchers and how will the police officers be trained on this?
So Elena, I'm going to ask that we hold that discussion for the second round of discussion, since this topic is not on agenda. And, and I believe we have Police Chief Abrams and he'll be able to answer that later.
At this point in time, there's no one else with their hand up.
Okay, great. What? Are you saying there is-
Elena just raised her hand again.
Oh, okay.
Would you like me to?
Yeah, if she's got something on the agenda, sure.
Elena, you're unmuted again.
Okay. So this is twice I've spoken and I've asked a question. I had plenty of time left and I'm cut off. So, you know, I asked a question and then you answered it and I was cut off. So, and the last time I wasn't able to get back on the list. So maybe we can, you guys can look at that process because I had one question. I have another question. I know I'm using up my time. The second question has to do with, again, on Jessica's point, I want to also appreciate the changes that were made from the previous council meeting to this council meeting. I really liked, Mayor, what you said about the changes to the Equity Council. One of the comments I want to make, though, is you mentioned a lot of the changes and you said, "Just like any other committee." But this isn't a committee, the way I understand it. It's a council. So what I fear is that some of the wording in the resolution might get lost in time. Well, what won't get lost is actually the title. And if I understand correctly, what council mentioned at the last council meeting is that councils are not legally obligated to follow the sunshine law and the open meeting laws. So I worry in time, that's what's going to stand and not what the actual resolution states. So I wonder, and I don't know enough about this, so this is a pure exploratory question, does it make more sense to actually name it a committee? So we're protected by what a committee means and not by a council. And I'm done with the question, so I'm fine if you mute me. Mute me.
Okay, thank you, Elena. So I'm going to ask the Borough Attorney, it, would there, if we have something in a resolution stating that this, that this has to be done? Or if the council then in its updated bylaws makes this part of their bylaws, would, would we have to change it from a committee, from a council to a committee? And, you know, is there any really significant difference there?
I mean, the answer is you would not have to change it. It really depends on how you run it. And you have committed yourself, and it's in the resolution, that it will be run as an open meeting, as an open body. And I don't think we'll, over time, lose track of that. If we start to do that, as your council, or whoever succeeds me as my, as your council, will certainly remind you of what the obligations are under the resolution. So there's really no need to change its name from an advisory council to a commission.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right. Do we have any other questions now?
Elena is asking to speak again.
It's been over three minutes.
So if, let's, let's keep it short, but I want you to have a chance to follow up.
I appreciate that, Mayor. Quick comment. So I do work in nonprofit world and with governance and boards. So I know that 15 years from now, the, the history may be lost. So my question, I'll just reword it for the council. Would there be a reason why you wouldn't want to change it to a committee from a council? So you don't have to rely on the words in their resolution or the mayor of 2020's intent?
Well, under our borough form of government, the various committees that are-
I'm sorry, Elsie, can you let Ed finish and then we'll get to you?
I was just going to comment that under our borough form of government, the committees and the commissions are really appointed by, with the advice and consent of council, and they work for the council. The change here has been to move this body into the executive branch in order to help implement things, streamline things, and move things along quicker. I don't think for that reason we should park the advisory council to the mayor in, in the committee column because it's really working for and with the mayor. And I think that's where it belongs.
Okay. Elsie, did you want to add to that?
I was, I always hope that 15 years from now, we wouldn't be having the same conversation. I, I thought with all the upheaval of change in our country that we'd be looking forward and this would be beyond us. I have hope that we will not be sitting in the same situation here like this 15 years from now.
Okay. Amen. Okay, let's move on. Thank you, Elena. Okay.
There are no other answers.
Okay, thank you. All right. We're going to move on to the rest of the agenda now. Clerk, could you please report on advertising the Fire Department Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park by removing and replacing Chapter 39 was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title when affidavits of publication are filed. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay. May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion? But I want to explain one little, a minor change that we're going to do. There is two minor changes. One refers to MIS and one refers to MIL. And those are two officers qualifications that we are going to be doing a slight tweak. I'm going to ask Pat to come in and talk a little bit about the tweak that we want to make to the ordinance before we move forward. It's about responsibilities and, Pat? And Pat Rinaldi is our acting-
I'm here.
Okay.
Basically, the, the ordinance is, it's giving officer qualifications, making it more right to the T. Now, as a fireman comes on the department, he actually knows what he needs to do to get, you know, to, you know, to the top level in the fire department. So it's kind of placed in order. It's kind of controlled, just giving a little bit more control so that the town has a, you know, a little understanding of what the fire department does and kind of knows the day-to-day operations of what has to be done.
Thank you, Pat.
And with that, I, yes.
You move. Have a second?
I second.
Okay. Any public hearing on this?
Yes, we have one hand from Morty Gershon.
Please state your name and address, Morty.
Yes, my name is Michael Gershon, otherwise known as Mortichai. I live at 68 Wedbridge Avenue. All my opinions are my own personal views. I am not a spokesperson for the Borough of Highland Park, the Highland Park Fire Department, the Highland Park Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated, or any subsidiaries of these organizations. I'm a proud volunteer of the Highland Park Fire Department for over seven years, having easily attended over 1,500 fire calls and reaching the level of Second Assistant Chief. Two weeks ago, the proposed ordinance to rewrite Chapter 39 was published as part of the agenda to the public. The ordinance was never seen or reviewed by the members of the Highland Park Fire Department. Multiple members requested a copy from the acting chief, but none was delivered. I even emailed the acting chief explaining the need for transparency and the overwhelming anxiety of fellow members that felt they were being, quote, "left in the dark." The response was, and this is a direct quote, "As to the ordinance, no one is keeping anyone in the dark. By now, you should know what you need to become a firefighter and what is expected of you doing the job of a firefighter, which is what is being addressed in the ordinance. Nothing over the top. I will see what I can do." End quote. Still, no one in the fire department was given a copy by the borough or asked for their opinion over the entire period the ordinance was being formulated before the first reading. If you read the proposed ordinance, it is a complete rewrite of the department and has little to do with, quote, "what one needs to become a firefighter." End quote. The proposed changes seem to reflect a fire department that is structured very differently than the Highland Park Fire Department. I sent over 250 issues and concerns with the proposed ordinance to the mayor and council. This includes omission of the allowance of legal and permanent residents in being a firefighter. Currently, we are an inclusive to our legal residents. The omission would discriminate these populations, including the removal of one of our top responders. Many statements that do not make sense or contradict other statements within the ordinance. Reasons and responsibilities that do not coincide with the Highland Park Fire Department. Antiquated language that is no longer used, including the term of "firemen," which many firefighters become offended by and is not inclusive. A second social media policy and harassment policy that conflicts with the policies issued by the business administrator and human resources. Some of the comments I've heard from fellow firefighters after reading this ordinance are, "We aren't even an afterthought in the town's view." It is clear that no one who knows the inner workings of the Highland Park Fire Department was involved whatsoever in the creation of the ordinance. The Highland Park Fire Department consists of an on-duty paid firefighter and a team of volunteer firefighters and fire officers to-
Thirty seconds.
"We work as a team to keep the town safe. We like to keep, be team members, not antagonists. I am often asked what the fire department needs. We need a lot. Everything that we need starts with having a proper leadership team and good communication. However, it seems we have many stumbling blocks placed in front of us. Therefore, the fire department is quickly withering away. Speaking for myself, not as representative of the Volunteer Fire Department, I am saddened at the lack of communication and collaboration between the authors of the proposal and the volunteer members."
Thank you, Morty. Morty, we have to keep things to three minutes, as you know. Thank you very much for your concerns. I'm going to ask if there's any other public comment?
Yes, there's Andrew Zappo.
Andrew, state your name and address, please.
Hi, Andrew Zappo, 131 Johnson Street. I'm not sure if this is allowed, but-
I'm not sure if this is allowed, but that gentleman, Mordechai, seemed like he had some very interesting points, and I'd like to yield my three minutes to him so he could continue. I don't think it's fair that something regarding fire safety be cut off before he's allowed to say his piece.
Andrew, are you a member of the fire department?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
And that shouldn't be relevant, Mayor.
No, I'm just curious, I was going to ask if you had something on your own to add?
No, no, I'm just curious what he had to say.
Okay, so Andrew is yielding his three minutes to you, Mordechai, if you'd like to speak.
One more paragraph, I'm going to start at the beginning of the paragraph. Speaking for myself, not as a representative of the volunteer fire department, I am saddened at the lack of communication and collaboration between the authors of the proposed ordinance and the volunteer members. I'm asking for objective honesty. Does the borough really want the volunteers? Not need, but want. I know the borough needs us. The question is, does it want us? If the truthful answer is no, kindly thank us for our time and we will disband. Otherwise, let us work together for the betterment and safety of our town. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment?
There are no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you. May I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion to, a roll call, please, for a motion to adopt.
Councilwoman Cannavera abstained. Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes, with the amendment.
Councilman George?
Yes, as amended.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, could you please report on advertising an ordinance to prohibit the feeding of deer for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, amending Chapter 165, disorderly conduct of the code of the Borough of Highland Park to prohibit the feeding of deer, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication or on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, public hearing, does anybody want to speak on this? Emma?
There is no one with their hand raised.
Okay, moving on. May I have a motion to adopt, a resolution to adopt the and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cannavera?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, can you please report on advertising the ordinance reconstituting the Human Relations Commission for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance reconstituting the Borough of Highland Park Human Relations Commission, amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication or on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, is there any public hearing on this, Emma?
Need a motion to take it up first.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion. Second.
Okay, public hearing?
I do not see any hands raised.
All right, then may I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cannavera?
I'd first like to start by saying, this was the very first volunteer position I've had in Highland Park, and it's an amazing commission, and yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, clerk, can you please report on introduction of an ordinance amendment to Chapter 9 Equity Commission for Consideration of Passage on First Reading by Title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, amending Chapter 9 of the code of the Borough of Highland Park by deleting Sections 100 to 102, has been introduced and writing by the Health and Human Services Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
All right, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cannavera?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right. May I have a motion to adopt or reject a resolution to establish the mayor's Equity Advisory Council?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cannavera?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, I'm appointing the following members to the mayor's Equity Advisory Council. Natalie Levine, Franklin Moreno, Pastor Antoinette Moss, Jeffrey Vardaro, Norma Vargas as the Human Relations Commission rep, Carolyn Timmons, Stephen Allard as the rep from the NAACP, Kermit Moss Jr., John Wenz as the second Human Relations Commission rep, and Kevin Dougherty. May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cannavera?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
I'm happy to see that it's a diverse group of people that's coming together, and I believe that this, how it's structured, will have different voices from across our town, so yes.
Councilman George?
The appointments have a lot of diversity, they have a lot of points of view, they have a lot of experience in living life that we're concerned about and making our society better. However, I abstain.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, we move on to the consent agenda, and I'd like a motion to adopt items number 15.
Mayor?
Yes?
Mayor, can I make a motion to remove item 19 for an amendment from the consent agenda?
You certainly can. Do you want to move on it separately, or do you want to remove it altogether?
Forgive me on the procedure, I would just like to move on it separately. I believe I just need to make a quick, suggest a quick amendment to it before we vote on it.
Okay, so can I have a second to remove the item number 19 and move it separately?
Second.
Okay. Do I?
Just an all-in-favor, it's fine.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
Hi.
Councilman Hale, just to clarify, this is with regard to the People's Rights Bill's assembly bills?
It is, yeah. I'm happy to explain as soon as it's appropriate.
Okay, so then let's vote on consent agenda items 15 through 18, and then 20 through 25. May I have a motion?
Motion. So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cannavera?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, then may I have a motion to adopt resolution in support of Assembly Bill 84226, 8034, the People's Bill?
Mayor, if I could offer a amendment to this, it's a simple one. This, the current version of the bill simply mentions the Assembly Bill. There is a Senate companion to this, and since it has passed the Assembly, it is in front of the Senate, I would propose that we add S234 in front of all of the Assembly Bill numbers, and that we also send a copy of this to Senator Patrick Deegan.
Second.
The current bill just says to the Assembly, and I think that we can simply add the Senate version, which is S2340, and then at the end, if we can send it to Senator Deegan.
Our attorney, can we do that?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Matt, you want to tell us a little bit more of what the bill says?
Sure, this is, yes, this is a Assembly Bill that was passed, it's currently in the Senate being debated for passage. Essentially, what this bill is about is that, under the current guidelines with COVID-19, once the emergency is declared over, there's a 90-day clock that starts on all foreclosures, on all proceedings with real estate transactions against, for a variety of reasons. But there's no clear understanding exactly what happens after that. There's no clear understanding of after that 90-day period, are foreclosures allowed, or are they immediately allowed on day 91? The purpose of this bill is to set out a plan so that residents facing foreclosures or residents facing evictions will know what their rights are and what their rules are after the 90-day period. So it extends the period where there is a protection, but it also gives a process by which homeowners and renters will be protected essentially from eviction or from foreclosure. The bill has passed the Assembly, and it is currently in the Senate. I think it is the right thing for us to do in terms of protecting both our renters and our folks who might be struggling with mortgage payments. Again, it's not about forgiving mortgages or forgiving past rent. It's simply saying that perhaps 90 days is not enough after the recovery to get back in good standing so that people aren't evicted and people are not foreclosed on their house. So I'm a supporter of the Assembly Bill, I think that we should support it in the Senate as well. I will say, in the instance of full disclosure, this is a bill from Assemblywoman Brittany Timberlake, who is my former student, so this is kind of an exciting idea that maybe we can support this bill. I think it's the right thing for Highland Park, and it's certainly the right thing for us to jump into the discussion as it is going to the Senate. The governor has indicated that he will sign it if it gets passed the Senate.
Very good. All right, so we had a motion? Did we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cannavera?
Yes.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Definitely.
Councilman George?
Becoming more and more important, absolutely, yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, we're moving on to our second public comment session, just as a reminder.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor, I want to make sure procedurally that we voted yes on the motion to amend, do we also need to vote yes on the resolution itself, or did we do that all at once?
I think we voted on the motion to accept the resolution, the support with the amendments.
Okay, just want to make sure we're on the right page.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The borough attorney is agreeing too. Okay, it's now time for our second public comment discussion session. Each speaker, again, has three minutes, but may comment on any topic. The borough clerk will monitor the time and will offer a 30-second warning, and then indicate when three minutes have lapsed. This will begin by 9:00 PM. If you would like to speak again, please raise your hand by pressing *9 on your phone or select the raise hand button in the application. The administrators' assistant will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak, please press *9 or raise your hand.
The first hand was Elena Gerstmann.
Elena, please state your name and address again.
This is Elena Gerstmann at 127 North Sixth Avenue in Highland Park. Appreciate the time that you gave me last time and the council's response about the terms council versus committee, I appreciate that. Question about the false 911 calls based on racer protected class that Governor Murphy signed into law this week. Specifically, how will the Highland Park Police Department be training dispatchers and police officers on this new legislation, and how will this be implemented?
I'm going to ask Councilwoman Foster Dublin, who's the liaison to public safety, to speak.
Because the bill was only passed this week, we need some time for, first, let me start saying that our police department, our dispatches, have been asking residents some very direct questions. If we said we asked the question, then that would be a moot point. So they have been pushing the envelope and asking a lot of questions. Why are you calling? What makes this person look suspicious? Questions such as those that they have been asking here in Highland Park. However, I'm quite sure that the AG is going to come down with a list of things that must be put in place to make this effective. So I know at this time, there's nothing that has been, the police chief has not been contacted for a meeting or an update as yet, so as soon as that's available, they'll have it and we'll let you all know.
Thank you.
I just want to add that I am very eager for this to happen, so I will be checking in quite a bit to see this happen, because this has been one of my major pet peeves here in Highland Park.
Thank you for that quick follow-up question. Do you think that you guys will have the ability to track to see if this law actually has made changes and if they're being reduced?
So I was going to ask Chief Abrams to respond as well, he's on the, at the meeting, and he can address that question.
Thank you.
Chief, can you unmute yourself? Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. So we've already seen a pretty good decrease in the types of calls that we were having problems with for suspicious persons after our last community forum. I don't have the exact number or percentages, but I know that they have decreased. With this law, it'll kind of give us the ability to follow up with the callers to try to determine, you know, exactly what was going on, and it gives us a leg to stand on to ask some questions that might be uncomfortable for some people who make these calls.
30 seconds.
As far as tracking the number of calls, yeah, our computer system that handles our calls and the where our officers go to, it'll let us keep track of how many calls we receive, and if there's charges involved and things of that nature. So it is something we can monitor to see if it actually deters an abuse of the system as we've seen in the past. I hope that helps, I hope that answers your question.
I...
Thank you.
All right. Is there someone else?
Yes, we have Abby Stern Cardinali.
Abby, please state your name and address.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
It's Abby Stern Cardinali, I live on Harper Street. A couple things about kind of procedure, I've brought this up a few times before. Since the pandemic and we've gone to Zoom meetings, it seems like you're not having agenda meetings. My first question is, are you having some kind of agenda meeting? If you are, how is this being made available to the public? And if you're not, how are you communicating in lieu of what you were doing previously? And I'll make my other comment before... And I'll make my other comment before we answer, just so I don't lose my time. And that actually is on that topic, which is, I think procedurally, you might want to just take a look at when someone is replying, stopping the time of the question, because often it seems like the person who's asking a public comment is running out of time when you're giving a reply, which just happened actually in the previous comments. So if you guys could stop the time, I know it's a little more work for you, but if you could stop the time when someone is getting a reply so that they're not really losing that time, I think everyone would appreciate that, and it makes sense. My comment. And then if you can go back and answer that question about the agenda meeting that you guys are handling, that I would appreciate it.
So we have eliminated the agenda meeting, and what, what happens is we have not, we are not having other meetings to replace it. What happens is the agenda is made. Each of the council members are given a date by which they can add things that they want to put on the agenda. Then we put all the agenda items together. The agenda is then sent out to each of the council members and, and Joan, you can answer better than I when they get those agendas. But any questions that they have about the agenda items are basically asked when the items come up at a regular meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add to that, Mayor?
Here.
The, and also the council members are still having their standing committee meetings that, those are the meetings that we normally schedule, and those are public as well, too. And I also wanted to comment on that. That's why you've been seeing, I think, last meeting, probably the last three or four meetings there, Matt just made a motion to make an amendment that would be something, sometimes at that agenda meeting, we would, he would bring that up and say, oh, I want to put this side, or so. There has been a lot of comments and different things, people making motions to, oh, I don't want this language in this resolution, let's change and vote on this way, which are items that we normally discuss at the agenda, but since we're not having it, you're actually seeing us do it during the normal agenda, so.
That's a good addition, Stephanie.
And I don't know if I have time left, but can you also, I don't know when you would discuss this, if there's no agenda meeting, or when, when, maybe in your, your working session after, but looking at the procedure during public comment of, you know, cutting people off when they're getting a reply, I think everyone would appreciate that as well.
Yeah, I'll discuss that with the council president and the borough clerk, and we'll figure something out.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else?
I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay. In that case, would the council members like a five-minute recess before we go to the work session, or do you want to just move right along?
I think we should move right on, Mayor, unless somebody needs to.
Okay, everybody okay with that? Just nod your heads. Okay, thank you. All right, so let's move on to our work session items. No formal action is taken during work sessions. Let's start first with the land use ordinance amendment about home-based businesses. Matt Hale?
Yeah, this is a, one of the things we've been hearing a lot about is that, that with COVID and everybody home, a lot of folks are running out of space to, to have school at home, have offices at home, and, and all of that. So in response to that, we've suggested some amendments to the existing code about what is permissible within a garage. It's, it's, right now, the, the code essentially is, is quite restrictive in that it says garages are for cars and, and primarily cars, and there are a couple other uses, but the, the, the amendment that we're, the, the changes that we're, we're bringing forward will be ones that will make it clear that, that it is okay to have a home office in, in your garage to, to work, to have a home office in your garage. We're, we're not going to the, to the, we're, we're not amending it in a way that people can run a, run a business with clients on routine basis coming into their home garage. It's more for a home office. So for example, there's, there's, there's no extension for plumbing and, and that type of thing. So we won't have people, you know, parking on the streets and then going into the home office. This will be a, a home office where you're working someplace else. It's just, you don't have to be in the same room when your kid's studying algebra. And so, so the, the, the goal of this is to allow people a little bit more flexibility, given the changes with COVID, to allow a little bit more usage, particularly of garages for, for home offices. And then it also expands a little bit the ability to use your garage for a, a home gym or a workout center or, or something like that. The, the way that the code was written is it was, again, restrictive. It, it seemed to me that tennis courts were okay, but you could not have a Peloton station or a weightlifting station. So that didn't seem to make a lot of sense. So that, that this is a, an attempt to sort of clarify that as well. That there'll be ability for people to, to use their space for, for other things. Home offices, gyms, other additional rooms. And, and this just makes that reality in some ways conform to code. So that's what we're hoping to do, so.
So Borough Planner, you helped us put this together. Is there anything you want to add to what Matt just mentioned?
No, there is also a little bit of housekeeping on accessory uses and home occupation that we're sort of cleaning up in the same amendments.
All right, any council members have any questions?
No, I think it's a great idea. I, I think it moved, it not only addresses what might be considered interim with during the COVID-19, but I, I think it modernizes and it recognizes, you know, what, what current status is and the, and the changing nature of the workforce. And I think that Matt and Jim have done a good job on it.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move this then on to the agenda for September 15th.
Yes.
That would be great.
Okay, good. All right. Next, we have an ordinance amending sections of the code to update language that refers to persons with disabilities and accessible parking. Stephanie?
Um, yeah, Tara, tell me about this, but I assume it is the request that we have spoke about in the beginning of the year, removing the word handicap from in our code. And so I thought this was a Joan task. I'm not sure Joan.
I did, I did pull up all the ordinances and I sent it to Ed's office, and Ed's office prepared it, but the mayor and Tara B felt that it should at least go to the group to make sure that your committee was on board with this, which I'm sure Tara could speak to, because it really did come from universal access.
Yeah.
And, and also so the council members were aware of what was.
Were aware of it before we put it on for introduction.
Sure.
Right, so are there?
Tara, you're muted.
Tara, you're muted.
Tara, I think Tara was the same time that you were muted.
My son was coming in the room, so I had to mute myself. Wording in our ordinances were all out of date. And like, the reason we use person with a disability is because we're putting the person first. So this was very important to our commission to have our ordinances all up to date with the proper writing and wording. So Joan did a great job and worked really hard on finding, you know, where it needed to be changed. So this is something I think we definitely need on the agenda. That's all.
So then, I'm sorry, Matt, did you?
Just another, I mean, this was a lot of work for Joan to hut and peck through the entire code to make these changes. And so I, I think it's an important change to make, and I know she worked really hard on it. I just wanted to say thank you as well to, to Joan for all her hard work on, on making this happen, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Okay. So this will be on the September 15th agenda, Stephanie.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we can move on to our goals. And so I'm going to, again, go around the way you appear on my screen. Tara, do you have, have, I guess, you know, finance really has nothing much going on until the end of the year again, right?
We don't, but I am going to be taking a class to learn more about municipal government, so I'm really looking forward to that and doing, you know, more as finance comes along.
Thank you. Matt, do you have anything you want to talk to about your goals?
Sorry, one of my, one of my goals was that there would be something that was in the corner of Fourth and Raritan. I was specifically stated that we needed to have a business in the corner of Fourth and Raritan. And, and by golly, there's a business moving into the corner of Fourth and Raritan, Jersey Home Furnishings, as I, I said. I, I just, I'm very excited and, and, you know, I know that the, the, the agent, the owner have reached out to Phil and to Gail and, 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 and we reached out to Joan and Scott to make sure that all of the permitting was, was done, but, but we can take that one off the bucket list, at least, you know, so I'm very excited by that.
And I also want to commend you for all the work you've been doing with our development attorney and our planner as we move forward with our hopeful plans for our downtown. So thank you for that, Matt, and thank you attorneys, Attorney Bowman, and our planner, Jim Constantine. Okay. You all just shuffled on my, on my screen for some reason. Okay, so now, Elsie, do you have something you want to report on towards your goals?
Yes, the streets are, the setbacks are being done, the linings are being done, and a lot of streets are being paved. So yes, we're, my, as pertains to my goal, we're moving right on target. So I think by next month or two, all the street setbacks, paintings, and cutouts will be just about completed, which I thought it was going to take another five years, but with COVID, a lot of people are home, so it's moving right along rather quickly.
Yeah.
I have an update in the next minute to see how much more we have. So I think we like cut out a good two years worth of work.
Yeah, and I, and I must tell you, in my own personal experience of driving, particularly on the south side near Benner and Magnolia and those Fourth and Third, you, you can certainly see much better as you stop at the stop sign now that there are less big cars parked by the corners there. So it, it seems to be working. Long time in the works, but it's happening, yes. Okay, Stephanie, do you have something to report?
Nothing much. Well, I did have, I had the celebrations and holidays and different things. The last council meeting, we did discuss the Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is with Josh at, with the Historic Commission. I did work on the draft, wanted Historic Commission's input. And once they review it, it will go to Human Relations and then come back to the working session for discussion.
Great. Great. Okay, Josh, how about you?
No reports tonight, ma'am.
No, I, I, you got cut off, I.
No reports tonight, ma'am.
Okay, okay, thanks. Phil, anything?
Yeah, just briefly, I'd like to just tell Matt that I beat my goal for, before he beat yours, because we got the, we got the water company online by July 1st, and that was my deal. But I should also note that the, that is not a light lift. We are ongoing. We have been conducting our monthly meetings with the Middlesex Water Company on the implementation. I actually spoke to some of the guys who are working there, you know, with, as you see the Middlesex water trucks driving around. Generally, they're the smaller trucks, you know, the utility trucks with the boxes on the back. Those are the ones assigned to us. When there is a bigger truck, that's generally a repair, but even those have been going well. You've seen the streets are being marked out for improvements already. That's the blue spray paint. So that's going on, but it's very complex, and we're, we're starting to look at the Water Quality Assessment Act required filing, so it's ongoing. It's, it's not a simple matter. A couple meetings ago, I had, the Public Works Committee had circulated step one, two, and I think three of the SOP for the upcoming discussion on whether we're going to engage in another sidewalk replacement program. I don't think it will be ready for the September, the, the next step, the final plan. I don't think it'll be ready for the September meeting, only because September's a short month, and we also have the high holidays. But in October, I hope to have the SOP so that we can actually start the meetings and be looking. If we decide to do a plan, we can make that decision in January. If, if we decide yes, then we could start implementing it.
Great. Anybody have questions for Phil on any of that? All right, seeing no questions, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Motion.
Second.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Be well and be safe.
Bye-bye.
Night.